Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight's meeting is a meeting of the Local Plan Advisory Group. My name is councillor Jackie Porter. I'm the Cabinet Member for the Built Environment and Wellbeing. So, welcome tonight. I believe we have a number of guests and guest speakers, and I welcome you too. And I think that I just wanted to start by saying owing to the ongoing Covid-19 pandemic, the government guidance, it isn't possible to hold this meeting in person. So, the council has therefore made arrangements under the Coronavirus Act 2020 and subsequent regulations permitting remote meetings to hold this meeting virtually. If you're a member of the public and would like to listen to the audio stream of the meeting, you may do so via winchester.gov.uk. At the same time, I've got a description of... We're just usually aware as time has gone on that there is a process which is better for the clear voicing of the meetings. So, there are a few housekeeping reminders just to run through because these new working practices are in response to the regulations. First of all, please can I ask everyone present that your microphones remain muted and your cameras turned off while you're not addressing the meeting? As this will reduce the background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. And can I also advise that the meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website? In addition, a video recording will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel in due course. And it would be really helpful if when speaking referring to the agenda papers, could you make sure you reference the page or paragraph number? Thank you. And please note the duration of this meeting is two hours and any business not conducted after this time may be deferred to an alternative date. Can I ask Democratic Services officers to confirm the names of officers present and the councillors that are actually on the advisory group, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, could I do a roll call of members that are present this evening at tonight's meeting? First of all, councillor Porter, Chair.
Yes, present.
Councillor Brooke.
Yes, I'm present.
And you, councillor Evans.
Yes, present.
And you, councillor Ferguson.
Good evening, present.
Good evening. Councillor Horrell.
Yes, good evening, I'm present.
Good, thank you. Councillor Rutter.
Yes, I'm present, thank you.
Thank you again. And councillor Thompson.
Yes, I'm present, good evening.
Yes, thank you. That's all members of the advisory group are present and in the meeting. You asked me about the officers present, and we have Adrian Fox, Strategic Planning Manager, and also Bridget Taylor from Strategic Planning, and also other members of staff from Strategic Planning, including Gill Lee and Steve Operechik. We have Simon Finch, Corporate Head of Regulatory. And we have myself, Dave Shaw, from Democratic Services, with David Blakemore tonight, also from Democratic Services. And could I take this opportunity to tell you that councillors Bell and Hutchinson have registered to speak as members of the City Council? And the members of the public present are Mr Patrick Davies and Mr Robert Shields from Bishopswaltham. Councillor Porter? Think you need to unmute your microphone?
Yeah, I do. Sorry, I was making papers rustle. Disclosure of interests, or apologies, there are apologies apart from the ones you described. Disclosure of interest, if anybody got any disclosure of interest they want to raise now, please do so. No? None? I'm going to register a personal interest as a county councillor. Thank you. To note in request from councils to make representations on an agenda item, I presume that most councils would like to make those representations at the agenda item. Can I just check that's true?
That would be councillor Bell and councillor Hutchinson.
Yeah, I'm happy councillor Bell and Hutchinson.
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes of the previous meeting held on the 23rd of November. Is everybody happy with those minutes?
Agreed.
Agreed. Any issues now? Agreed. Okay, so we'll go forward and accept those minutes, thank you very much. Public participation. Again, public participation. I have two speakers, Mr Davies and Mr Shields. Would you like to speak now? Or would it be more appropriate for you to speak to the particular agenda item that you wish to speak about?
I'm happy to say my piece now.
All right, okay. Davies, would you like to start? And then, Mr Shields, what would you like to do?
I'm happy with either.
Okay, we'll do both of them now. So, Mr Davies first and then Mr Shields second, if that's okay?
There's a lot of background noise. I don't know whether there's some background appearing and they shouldn't be.
Yes, I'm just going to make sure that everybody has got their microphones off except you so that we'll be able to concentrate on what you say. Thank you very much. And I'm going to switch mine off too.
Thank you very much. I have enormous sympathy for the officers who had to produce such a thorough draft consultation at these extraordinarily difficult times. I have a few questions and comments on the text. So, I think it's important there's absolute clarity in what this exercise involves. And if I can say, I don't think the situation has been helped by the two rival petitions being promoted by groups on the council on their websites on these local plan issues, nor until very recently by highly misleading material being distributed door to door despite the Covid emergency. Having said that, I do also wonder if a consultation document of 100 pages is appropriate. I'm assuming there will be summary materials and it'd be nice to know how this is actually going to be done, if there's going to be a separate questionnaire or how it will all work. Holy admirable as the carbon neutrality objective may be, is it wise to include material which may conflict with national policy, such as the issues governed by building regulations, which is referred to on page 21? And should so many pages of the document cover this topic? Worthy as it is, in various places, sustainable public transport is mentioned with many references to walking and cycling, fine, that's splendid, but never does the word bus, let alone the word train, appear. Surely once Covid issues are sorted, it is vitally important for the council to encourage the use of buses and trains. This should always have been a major objective. Why is it not spelled out? On pages 28 to 31, the green belt issue is raised. But I do wonder if enough emphasis is made on the rarity of green belts in this part of England, their real purpose and the meaning of exceptional circumstances, surely a risk of raising expectations which cannot be fulfilled? On page 35 onwards, the relationship between developers' aspirations in the Sheila, the government's planning white paper and its fluctuating demands on housing numbers. Are we sure these paragraphs are as clear and up to date as they could be? Isn't there a real risk of confusion worse confounded when this actually goes out to the public? Also, my last point is in Appendix 1, there's a list of many pieces of work which have been carried out before Covid hit us. Many months ago, I did question at one of your meetings if some of these were still remotely relevant or would be updated. I repeat that request because I think it's important that we don't put out a lot of material, or you don't put out a lot of material, which is so out of date. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Davies. And hopefully we'll address some of those points, but I've written them all down. And I think that's precisely why this Local Plan Advisory Group is here. Because what we can read, having been working, and officers can read, having worked on these for a long time, it doesn't necessarily bring out what the public would expect to see. And so, it's very good to have somebody else read it and make some comments. So, thank you very much. We'll certainly take all of those into account. Thank you. Mr Shields, would you like to speak now?
Thank you. Thank you, yes. Bishopswaltham Parish Council. I'd much appreciate the opportunity to address you on behalf of Bishopswaltham Parish Council, representing our residents. We understand the need for this new local plan and the requirement to get the right policies in place from the start. Consultation is critical. Although we do not know how many new dwellings are proposed, we would be unlikely to challenge the number, provided the local character is preserved and it is commensurate with a limited infrastructure available. But we want to work closely with you to arrive at a plan in the same way as we did last time around, offering you solutions compiled by residents that were accepted in their entirety into Local Plan Part 2. It is in this spirit and on behalf of Parish Council, I offer two strategic proposals. Bishopswaltham Town is long and thin. To retain the character of a market town with an easily accessible town centre, it needs to be rounded. This requires high-level planning. The current Sheila is merely the summation of land offered for development by landowners. There is no rhyme or reason in planning terms for the overall pattern. To select sites only from this restricted availability is the antithesis of planning. Instead, a proper town plan should be formulated with landowners then being approached as needed. Secondly, about half the current settlement boundary of Bishopswaltham is bounded by the South Downs National Park, which constrains all new developments in one direction only. There are some suitable sites for development to the north of the town, but the South Downs Authority has no priority in their own plans for developments in this area, further unbalancing the geographical layer of the town. We would request there to be a statement of common ground or other similar agreement with the South Downs National Park Authority to share the number of new developments for the sustainability of Bishopswaltham. Turning now to your draft consultation document. It is certainly comprehensive and lengthy, and I hope you will be able to give due regard to returns from parish councils which can truly represent the majority of residents, knowing well from past surveys and consultations what they want. There isn't the time to speak on every topic in the document, but suffice it to say, the existing vision for the market town still looks fine, as do the sustainable development objectives. Achieving carbon neutrality is important, but parish councils have limited ability to participate in the opportunity mapping or analysing carbon emissions at parish level. For the protection of the rural characteristics of the market towns and villages, it is more important to define local green areas and settlement gaps under focus on large-scale green belts. Recent events have placed a premium on reasonable-sized gardens. Where this is not possible, housing developments should include green spaces for leisure and allotments, as well as play areas. Thank you, and we look forward to working with you in the coming months. Adios.
Thank you very much, Mr Shields. That was very enlightening and very helpful. Thank you very much indeed. In fact, at one of the seminars that we did earlier in the year, one of the planners very clearly said we should plan first and then ask for sites afterwards. And I think that's exactly what you're describing. So, thank you very much. We'll certainly take those points into account. And I think we'll now carry on to the main body of the meeting. And we're bringing you tonight two interlinked papers. The first one is a method by which Winchester City Council will seek the views. And the second is a description of the strategic issues and options papers which will go out for consultation. Plan to close that consultation on the 23rd of March. Bridget Taylor is leading on the website, and I'm going to ask her to come onto the screen, please.
Thank you, councillor Porter. I shall attempt to share my screen to show you some images. So, now, will you be so kind as to tell me if this still works? Can you see that now that I've expanded it? Great.
Yes, we can.
So, we have instructed Studio Republic, who are a local firm, to prepare some branding for the new local plan exercise. And they are in the process of developing a website, which will be a standalone website, which will host all of the local plan consultations and information so that everything can be found in one location. So, the branding, the strapline essentially is 'Your Place, Your Plan'. Now, the astute of you will notice that the picture I've got on the right says 'Our Place, Your Plan', which is in development. So, that will be changed. But this broadly gives you the idea of the colour palette that has been chosen for the branding. And the website is focused around four key areas. The home area, an area which sets out the key issues, and then an area called 'Discover Your Area', which is a mapping feature. And then the fourth area is the consultation section. So, if we just look very briefly at each of those. So, the home section is where we will feature background information, context, information to help people to understand what a local plan is, why it's important and what the process is. And we will also, in this location, provide information about the government's proposed changes to the planning system and our responses that we've made and any changes to our process throughout. And we will aim to have some videos embedded here where we will explain for those who would prefer to see a video rather than reading detailed text on the website. The next section is the key issues section. And as you will see in the strategic issues and priorities document, there are nine key issues which are listed here. Each of these has been given a logo which has been designed by Studio Republic, and this will accompany that issue throughout the local plan process. These are not finalised, but this gives you an indication of where we're heading. And under each of these green topic areas, you'll be able to click a button and drop down, and there'll be a number of other documents which will provide flesh to the bones, essentially. So, there'll be evidence reports which have been commissioned relevant to that topic will be added there. And we will also add a number of short background topic papers. So, for example, if we think there is some basic information needed to help understand a topic, we will be preparing a short, one-to-two-page note which can go on there as a PDF document. For example, a note explaining how the housing target is calculated and so on. The next section is 'Discover Your Area'. So, this aims to enable people to focus in on what it really means for them in their local area. So, it will provide some information and lead to this interactive map. We're aiming here to bring the website very much in line with what the government is promoting in their recent white paper, which is digital-based mapping, making people able to understand with maps how development might result in their area. So, please don't take these outlines as anything here. The designers have just thrown those in as indicative. But we will feature on this map things such as Sheila sites and listed buildings. And in time, if we see some of the government's changes to the planning system eventuate, we can then build up more information in this map to display, so hypothetically, growth areas or something of that nature. And finally, the 'Have Your Say' section. So, this will give people the ability to register, to receive direct updates in their inbox. And we're hoping to include some information here which really explains to people the importance of getting involved because we are trying through this website to make sure we reach a wide portion of the district, really, and try to engage some people who might not have been involved in a local plan before. And then we are building in a feature which enables us to have short polls here. Now, the aim of this is, given Covid-19, we will be holding some live events around this consultation. And we hope to have some interactive questions during those events. Slido will be used to do polls and so on to get some feedback from the people who attend those events. And we would very much like to ensure that anyone who is not able to attend those events still has the ability to answer those questions. And they'll feature here on this part of the website. And it will help us to gain an understanding of the issues which people are interested in, the issues which people think are important to feature in the local plan, and perhaps gather some information and views from the people who might not have the time nor inclination to get involved in the more detailed consultation element. So, we're still working out the types of questions that would feature here. But an example given here is ask people to name of the nine topics which three are the issues that they're most concerned about and want to see addressed, for example. And then, throughout the website, we're building in space here where we can add in key quotes and information and data around things that are happening in the district, measures being taken which are relevant to those nine topics. So, that is it in a nutshell, if anyone has any questions.
Suggestions or questions? Councillor Evans has come forward to make some comments.
Yes, thank you. Bridget, this is all great, and I really like all the graphics as well. So, two questions. How will a wide range of people who you wish to consult know about this website? And is everything going to be online?
So, we are working on an engagement strategy at the present. So, the aim is that we will use social media, use the council's existing platforms. We'll be using Instagram and Twitter, Facebook and LinkedIn to promote the local plan website and enable people to link through. We will be using the council's existing forums and platforms, so Parish Connect and so on, and also writing directly to parish councils and to other interested groups and to anyone who has already registered on the existing council website to notify them. Alongside that, we're also exploring at the moment which of various options we'll be able to do in terms of physical advertising around town, posters and so such, or media. Sorry, the second question, sorry, will you remind me?
Oh, is it all online?
Yes. Yes, it's... So, because of the dates of the consultation, which we will, as councillor Porter said, will run until the 23rd of March, we expect there's a reasonable likelihood that the majority of that period will be in lockdown. So, we're planning at this stage that the survey and so on will feature online along with all of the information supporting the consultation. We will hold these events, but yes, they will be online. We're going to ensure there are some printed materials available to be posted out to anyone who doesn't have internet access. But we don't think it's safe to be holding face-to-face events or planning for that to happen. So, we're trying to plan very much to make sure it's available for those who can't get online. But the majority of the information sharing will be online.
Chairman, could I just make a comment?
Yes, of course.
And I represent Aurora Ward, and I know that we've had an issue recently over trying to help children with working at home. And I know that many homes, A, don't have internet access or don't have computers. So, if you could just bear that in mind, because all the things that you mentioned, like Twitter and Instagram, that will not be available to all these people. So, I hear that you're going to try and find ways to reach everybody, but I just wanted to reinforce that from my own particular ward. Thank you.
Certainly, thanks. We have asked the designers also to make sure that everything that's designed for an online format is capable of being viewed on telephone. So, we hope that some people who might not have physical devices, laptops and so on, might, some of them at least, might still have phone access. So, that might help a little, but I fully appreciate the point.
I'm afraid that's in the same vein, smartphones, you know, that's in the same vein. But, you know, as long as you're aware of that issue. Thank you.
I think councillor Evans, I think we're acutely aware of that problem. And we have been saying, Mr Fox was saying that, of course, lots of people, a lot more people are walking now than they were before, and there are some routes that they take that are routes that they use regularly. And that's why we're talking about having some posters as well, going back to the old-fashioned sort of plans of posters. But it would be very useful, I think, particularly in rural areas where people are going out walking and seeing posters like that. And also, as part of our community engagement strategy, which we updated during Covid, there will be the possibility of having paper versions back. So, we do want to reiterate that it is not just for those people online, it's for everybody. The advantage of the website is that actually it will ask quick questions as well. So, people won't be expected to respond back with 250-page responses on the telephone. I think that's very clear. Councillor Horrell.
Good evening, Chair. And just thank you for letting me come in here. I want to reiterate the point already made by councillor Evans, and that is my concern, that not that we should not be doing what you're doing with the digital platform, but actually, are we then excluding particular groups in our community? We already know as a council that we've recently had a piece of negative feedback from some of our representatives in the TAC group with the housing portfolio and how they haven't been able to engage online. Not everyone has the right equipment, which has already been made, or the right skills to be able to do that. And I think we should learn from that representative group who we work with consistently. We know them well, and they have made us very aware of that. And I think we need to ensure that this piece of work is accessible by all. And as a consequence of that, I think we have to work extra hard in this situation to think about those other opportunities besides meetings. I agree with you completely that meetings are obviously inappropriate at this time. But I know in my own village, we've been putting posters in bus shelters about consultations that have been going on, that you have kindly produced at the council. We have put information out in other published documents that are available. So, I think we need to learn from those messages we've had and ensure that we do not exclude those who are limited with machines and limited with their software understanding and capability. Thank you, councillor Porter.
Thank you. Councillor Horrell, do you have any suggestions of other places? Because actually, Mr Fox, in our discussion, we talked about bus shelters, actually. Although not necessarily many people are catching the buses, they're certainly going past the bus stops and they will see those. But have you got any other suggestions of places where we should be trying to get the notices out to?
Well, I think that...
History groups, volunteer groups, that sort of thing?
Yes, our community support groups, who've obviously been established through Covid. Many of them have an email network. Obviously, you've got the Parish Connect and all that goes with parish councillors. You have your councillors. Bridget, you and I talked about that last week on another project. Use your councillors who are sending information out into various publications. We're a postal service in our own right on emails and various publications. We have a lot of sites that the council has. We have notices in car parks and the like. And even though there are less people, there are still people parking and around town. We have our windows at the Guildhall that can be used for posters. So, let's go back to some of the old-fashioned ways of just, as people are... And that's just locally here, but obviously Bishopswaltham, Wickham, Whitley, they will all have those same outdoor opportunities that you could actually publish this. And I think very cost-effectively, you could put some of those notices out. But councillor Porter, I'll have another think about some other organisations and happily send you a note. But I think it's something we all want to pool our knowledge on, don't we?
Very much so. It's very important that if anybody has any group they think is relevant, that they mention it to us in the next few weeks because we do need to write out to people as well as go to the... I think we have more than 15,000 addresses that get the regular updates from Winchester City Council, and there is the opportunity to sign up to have the specific planning knowledge. So, Bridget, I think we've got councillor Ferguson and councillor Thompson still to go. So, councillor Ferguson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you, Bridget, for the presentation. I'm really excited about this website. I'm really excited about particularly the interactive map, the fact that I can flip through to different sections, the fact that we are going to have audio recordings or videos for people to watch rather than asking them to go through, you know, potentially 100 pages of text, which we get to do on this advisory group. It sort of again comes around from what councillor Horrell and councillor Evans were saying. I wondered if we had plans of how we engage specific age groups or interest groups. So I was thinking particularly of younger people. I know we say we're putting it on Twitter and on Facebook, possibly Instagram. But again, would there be any opportunity to do a virtual presentation to an interested group in the same way that we do briefings to parish councils? Could we do a virtual briefing to the university students that are with us, for example? Also, my second question was going to be around, when we're looking at the level of interaction with this website, what, if anything, will we do if we find that there's a sort of bias in the interaction? So it suggests to us there's a geographical bias that everybody, for example, in the towns are interacting with it because it's easy to access. But we find there are certain areas, because of the digital connectivity, because of the issues that can't interact. And equally, we've all talked about putting up posters telling people about the consultation. That's all one and good, but it probably still demands that you have internet access to then look at those posters and then go online to interact. So my question is, will there be an opportunity on those posters? If I really don't have internet access, can I get some kind of written material, even though that's bad for the environment, so I can actually go through this and look at it? So lots of interrelated questions there. If you could help, that would be great.
Bridget, would you like to answer that one at that point? Because I think that's relevant here.
Yes, sure. So yes, I quite agree in terms of virtual presentations. The aim is we're compiling a list of targeted groups that we think would benefit from their own virtual session. So we want to have sessions available to the whole public on all of the topics. And then at the moment, we're thinking we're going to approach schools, the university, on, again, covering all topics, but slightly tweaking the content perhaps to make it more appropriate. And other particular groups, so the traditional hard-to-reach groups, I think, will be looking to do targeted events. So we will be approaching the organisations with an invitation and to explore whether that's something they'll be interested in getting students to do. Because obviously with the current situation and homeschooling, you know, it's more, it's more feasible this time around to possibly build that into a school day than it might ordinarily be. In terms of geographic bias and the potential to remedy deficiencies in interaction, yes, I think that probably needs a bit of thought, but it's, we certainly will have the data available to us and we'll be able to get a good understanding of where, you know, what sort of level of engagement there has been with the website. And I think that's the benefit of it, that we should have a good understanding of who we've reached and the potential to top that up if need be with some targeted focus to gain some views. So once we've done this consultation, the intention is to engage directly with parish councils across the district to discuss the issues again. So there will be the opportunity there. And in terms of the posters, the intention is that the posters will include details of where you could gain a hard copy of the consultation, which will be at the council's offices. So you could collect from customer services and there will be a hard copy set of questions there that you could fill out manually and leave your views. And that part shouldn't be too long, the questions.
Thank you.
I think we will need to also be able to offer to post it out, because we do need to be able to do that. It would be unreasonable for someone from Wickham or Bishop's Waltham to be driving up just to, or trying to find transport to come up, I think. Mr Fox, did you want to say something? I'm just going to go back to councillor Thompson, if that's okay with you.
If I could just add, Chair, to what Bridget's kindly said. We are very, we are very keen to build on the back of, obviously, the very good work that was done for Central Winchester. And we've learnt a lot as an organisation on, obviously, good consultation techniques as a result of Central Winchester. And in terms of, obviously, the way that they approached their consultation, which obviously is disclosing, they put down the customer services telephone number and basically they asked them to send out a copy if obviously somebody couldn't actually get hold of a copy. So we are very aware of that, that obviously we need to make that available. And I think Bridget made the comment that we will have a limited print run available to address that. But just to reiterate, we are very keen to hear from anybody about good ways to consult with people, with groups, organisations or locations. So please do let us know. We are very keen to listen about where we can do it. We've had a very good discussion internally about what we can do, but we're keen to build on the back of that. So please do let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you very much, councillor Porter. Actually, Mr Fox has just made the point that I was going to make, which was certainly for Central Winchester, that people were encouraged to ring customer services and then put in a request for paper copies of the consultation. Customer services at the moment is only open by appointment. And I suspect that's likely to be the case for the length of this consultation on the local plan. So that really is the, you know, I think we need to have a phone number to give to people. And the other point I was going to raise was, of course, yes, we as local councillors really have a responsibility to try and get the message out to all our communities, that there is a really important consultation going on. We all write pieces for parish magazines, church magazines, all sorts. And I think it is incumbent on us to actually highlight the website and/or the telephone number, so that we do actually get through and we use all the channels we can to publicise this consultation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we're all agreed that online is great, but we do need to make sure we've done the belt and braces. But we're really hoping that the online will excite people and give them the opportunity to respond, not just onto the whole of the long consultation, but also to get a flavour of what people feel as well. Bridget, do you want to say anything else to that?
No, I don't, I don't think so. But yes, that's certainly the aim, to make sure we can take people's views in the way that they're willing to give them to us. So if someone's inclined to get involved by reading a detailed document, great. But if they're not inclined to do that, we still want to hear what they have to say.
Really? Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. Is there anything else anybody else wants to say? I've only got, I haven't got any more raised hands on this one. No, thank you very much indeed, Bridget.
Councillor Porter, sorry, I just haven't, I just had an idea. We used to have a notice board, I think, in the city centre at St Maurice's. And that, I think, was removed as part of the renovation. But that's a very central point there. I wonder if that might be worth reinstating in some format.
Investigate that.
As a central location which many people might pass by. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Porter, I did have my hand up, but it doesn't appear to be registering. It's councillor Clementson.
Did you request to speak, councillor Clementson? Are you feeling better, by the way?
Much better, thank you. Yeah, thank you. It was just a suggestion, whether or not supermarkets would be a good, excuse me, a good location. You said, let us know, a good location to put notices.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you very much indeed. Right, I think we'll move on now, but thank you very much for those suggestions. Greatly appreciated. So the second paper, which is item seven, is the Draft Strategic Issues and Priorities Document. And this paper is opening up the debate on issues which are important to our residents and businesses. Our officers have devised this as they've tried to move seamlessly from the old local plan process to the new one, whatever that may be. The government announced they would be implementing the Algorithm of Figures, which asks Winchester District to provide land for 1,000-plus homes a year. And they've introduced the old formula, more or less, which expects us to deliver 692 homes a year. So with the permissions we have in place already, this brings the land allocation to space for 2,692 homes. I just want to be clear on this point tonight. This paper is about the way we want to live and work. It does not even attempt to allocate or ask the public to choose specific sites for homes or employment or green space, nor does it seek to. The local plan is about so much more than homes. It's about building communities and the way we live and spend our leisure time. It's about providing employment and transport options and green spaces. And I note councillor Patrick Davies' comment about trains and boats, trains and buses, and I'll check that. So how do we want to live? How can we plan the district for a low-carbon living? Should we be allocating active travel corridors? These are all questions. So I'd like to ask you specifically about the list of priorities that are listed at the beginning. Are they easily understood? Could any be amalgamated or simplified? Are the tables clear? It would be really helpful to know if there's any more that could be done to make them clearer to new readers. And the issues and options presented for consultation offer the public choices. Their responses will determine the way we want to see the plan develop. And so when the responses are distilled and we move forward to the next stage, I want to be really confident that they feel ownership of this plan. We want the public to feel that it's their district and their plan. So I know that councillor Ferguson was going to speak briefly and councillor Fox, no, Mr Fox wants to say some words before we start. So, Mr Fox, do you want to say anything else as an introduction to this piece? And then do you want to make your presentation? I think then councillor Horrell, you might like to speak. And councillor Brooke, do you want to speak after Mr Fox has made his presentation?
Yes, please.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. To say, we have produced this document. It is, if I'm honest, the third version of this document that we prepared, because we prepared one, as you know, back in August. We were then quite happily preparing one with the new algorithm. And we've changed it again to obviously go back to the original figures. But it's not just that. It is very important to say that we have taken on board some very new issues, such as the work that's been undertaken for the vision for Winchester. We've amalgamated and incorporated a number of key findings from that report. And it's very important that we talk about what strategy we want for the local plan, first of all, rather than talking about individual sites. And I do want to stress that point, that it's really important to talk about the strategy and the approach. Hence, while we've done a lot of work on developing the objectives for the local plan, the vision, and we're very keen to obviously have people's views on those particularly important points. So like I say, it is very, there's four different growth options, which we spent a lot of time developing. And like I said, we're very, very keen to have comments on those different ways that we could obviously develop in the future. And I do think that's an important point. We have incorporated the new topic on living well in recognition of, obviously, the lockdown and Covid-19, that obviously it's really important to have green spaces as part of, obviously, the way that we live and obviously exercise. And obviously, we have incorporated a new point on Green Belt, fully accepting the comment that was made by Mr Davies about, obviously, how much detail we go into there on that particular topic. But like I say, I'll stop there, but I'm quite happy to have any questions. I haven't got a presentation as such, Chair. I'm just happy to have any questions raised.
Thank you very much, Mr Fox. I'm actually going to ask councillors Bell and Hutchison if they'd like to make their representation at this point. I think it's a relevant point to do that. Councillor Bell, councillor Hutchison?
I'd be happy to.
Right, shall we take councillor Bell first?
Okay, I don't mind who goes first.
You go first.
Lovely. Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to this opportunity to speak to your local plan advisory group. I've been involved with such planning over a number of years and very much appreciate the opportunity to contribute to the current debate. I hope by the time this document comes to consultation, we have some certainty about housing numbers required. I hope these numbers have now been confirmed at previous levels and we can proceed with a more measured and sensible approach to strategic planning for housing. I'm pleased to welcome the new focus of the Winchester Local Plan going forward. In the last iteration, we argued for minimal acceptable standards of space, natural light, insulation. Some were accepted, some fell on barren ground, but now it appears that what we were arguing for several years ago is now a given. Oh, hey, hallelujah, whatever. I'm very pleased with the generality of what's been proposed, but that is not my main purpose this evening. My main purpose is to highlight the very special characteristics of land south of Winchester and the need to protect these characteristics. The government has not made our task easy by proposing radical changes to the planning system and proposing exceptional targets for housing numbers and then rowing back on both numbers and reforms. The government has in effect wasted the time and efforts of planning officers up and down the country who are valiantly trying to accommodate the worst of what was proposed and then finding that it wasn't. I fully support the carbon neutrality and sustainability targets of this new local plan. It is fair that every proposal going forward is assessed against our sustainability targets. The new document addresses some of the changes since the local plan. I would argue that areas such as Hersley still fit within a rural areas brief as articulated in MTRA three and four. However, these rural areas adjacent to Winchester town suffer an additional pressure and deserve a more specific attention in this local plan. To focus on the area south of Winchester, the area that has come to be called Royal Down, we, Hersley Parish Council, Oliveris Battery Parish Council, Compton Shalford Parish Council, are fundamentally opposed to this massively out-of-scale development for our area. But this does not mean that Hersley, I'm speaking specifically for Hersley, that Hersley PC and indeed other parishes are not actively looking at solutions that will assist small-scale development in our parish areas. In fact, we've been in discussions with a number of local landowners to arrive at possible ways forward which do not include such a massive and destructive development. It's important to understand that our proposals are not NIMBYism. We have positive proposals to provide multiple options. We therefore implore the local planning team at Winchester to take account of these very real and very positive submissions. We will work with you to provide local housing for local residents, but it will not include the Royal Down proposals as currently published. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Bell. Councillor Hutchison, would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you very much indeed for giving me the opportunity to share a few words. And first of all, I'd really like to welcome this paper, which I think is excellent, and particularly the focus on the climate emergency and other priorities, as well as some of the elements that have emerged through the work that we've been doing on the vision for Winchester. And in particular, the concept of the 15-minute city, which I think we should really refer to as the 15-minute town, neighbourhood, village, it's all of those things. It's not just the city. At the last meeting of the local plan advisory group, reference was made to the fact that the town forum was going to be doing the Winchester element of this plan. And we've been doing quite a lot of work particularly on the vision. And to carry the vision forward, one of the recommendations from the vision is the need for mapping and preparing a plan for the town, which will be embedded within the local plan. So that is the next stage of work that we hope to be carrying out. But at the moment, we haven't discussed the four strategic growth options. But of course, Winchester is key for all of them. But I just wanted to clarify one thing within the paper and then make six comments that I suppose refers specifically to Winchester. The first is that the town forum initiated the vision work. It initiated the vision work, which was a vision for Winchester town. That was all of the built-up area, including the surrounding, immediately surrounding areas. It wasn't confined to the five parishes that make up the town forum. And I think that's a really important point that we need to be clear in going forward, that it was neither just the town forum parishes, nor was it the settlement boundary. But it was very much looking at the built-up areas, which therefore would include. But it was very much looking at the built up areas, which therefore would include Kings Barton, John Wall's Barracks and things like that. But having clarified that, there were just sort of six points which I feel, uh, were perhaps missing, but really related primarily to Winchester. Um, the first one I'd like to mention is promoting mixed use development, which is absolutely crucial to the concept of the 15 minute city, town or neighbourhood. The paper is very heavily focused, and I understand why, on the need for new homes and housing numbers, because that's what the government's target is about. But in terms of making the place work for people, it's very important that we look at, um, the context of development in smaller developments and how they relate and how we achieve the 15 minute concept within existing neighbourhoods, as well as areas that are going to be changed. And linked to that, uh, there's no reference to spatial plans. I very much appreciated what Mr Shields said with regard to Bishop's Whalton, because essential for gaining support for development is knowing where it may go. And also knowing about the importance of the quality of development and infrastructure, access, streets and roads. These are the important issues that affect people and I hope will come out as we develop more of the spatial plans, which are crucial to this. And this is particularly important with regard to taking the vision work for Winchester town forward. Um, as is suggested, but also very much key to the white paper, which is very much focused on spatial planning and master planning. Another element that is really important for Winchester is regeneration and its role in contributing to providing homes, as well as improving the built form of areas and neighbourhoods. It contributes and may contribute really importantly to carbon reduction, but it would cover many brownfield sites, as well as improving the more deprived areas of the town, which is hugely important. Again, something that doesn't come up, uh, when you're just looking for sites in another context. The paper is heavily focused, and I understand why, um, on the Sheila sites, but it doesn't refer to land and sites owned by Winchester City Council and Hampshire County Council, nor does it refer to other socially owned land which may become for, coming forward for development. I'm thinking particularly of land owned by the hospital, uh, the prison and indeed the barracks. But I'd also like to highlight one other element not very much gone into in the, um, looking for sites and looking for housing. And that is the reference to new council housing and council led housing developments, which are really important in considering one of the objectives of the overall plan, which is to provide homes for all and particularly to focus on homes for lower income people. Um, many people who work in Winchester, who have secure jobs in local authority and others, can't afford to live in the town. And I think a key part of our work, particularly the council led housing side, is to make sure that we can, um, address that side of housing development. And finally, I'd like to refer to the fact, um, one of the objectives of the plan, which I thoroughly support, is to promote active travel. And particularly references made repeatedly to walking and cycling. This will require working very closely with Hampshire County Council. And I suppose my query here is a question. How is this going to be addressed in taking the plan forward? How are we going to work effectively with the county council? Uh, the movement strategy was initiated four or five years ago, but is moving incredibly slowly. And there's no evidence yet of any change in the direction of providing better infrastructure for walking and cycling. So it's really a question as to how this, which I thoroughly support, is actually going to be delivered. Thank you very much indeed.
Uh, thank you, councillor Hutchison, and thank you to councillor Bell as well. And hopefully we can address some of the questions you've raised in your, uh, in your question, in your speeches, uh, in our conversation in a moment with, um, Mr Fox. Um, councillor Ferguson, did you want to, um, discuss, uh, the matter of the, the priorities for employment?
Um, yes, thank you, Chair.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to, um, let the advisory group know and members in the public is that, um, in looking at the number of strategic economic objectives that have been identified, they go on to about three and a half pages. Um, with, through conversations and working with officers, senior officers in both the planning and the economy team, it's clear that we are able to refine and refocus those. So, um, some of them can be consolidated, others can be scaled down. So it's really just let the public know that the essence will remain, but they will just be, um, more refined and, um, there will just be fewer of them. But all of the factors that have been raised in those objectives will be retained. Thank you, councillor.
Um, thank you. I think, um, we have discussed this and just realised that actually it made a document even longer when actually if we thought about it, we could refine it. But it is really important that the public know what our economic drivers are for this local plan as well. So thank you. That's really helpful. Um, and we will see those, I presume, when it's published for Cabinet?
Um, um, yes.
Or when it goes out?
Yes, that's what I've been told, that when it goes to Cabinet, is that, um, next week?
Yes, we can do an update paper on that, yes? That's brilliant. Thank you very much indeed. That's really helpful. Thank you. Uh, councillor Rutter, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, Chair. Um, councillor Hutchison briefly touched on this. Um, but, um, my concern is, is on page 68, um, proposed changes included in the white paper. One of the things that we were most proud of in the last local plan was that we had agreed that 40% of all new developments would, um, contribute to either 40% towards affordable housing or 40% of the development would be affordable housing. Um, that commitment has been watered down over the years by the government. Um, but page 68, I find really alarming, um, that, and I think it will have a crucial impact on affordable housing levels, both, um, local authority provided council housing and also, um, housing association housing. When, do we know when any decision will be made about the proposal here? Um, and how can we influence the level of the proposed levy, which is going to take the place of, um, of, of contributions for affordable housing from developers? Do we have any idea about that? Because it, it is actually, you know, vital that, that we have some information about this, because it basically would wipe out all our affordable housing at one, one blow if it wasn't set at the right level. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr Fox, would you like to respond to that? Do you have any influence? I think that's the question.
I think the answer to that, uh, Chair is I'd love to have a lot of influence. And I'm certainly talking to the right people to try and make sure we have got influence. But, um, in terms of obviously councillor Rutter's question, the affordable housing, uh, threshold will be determined by, uh, as the later stage in the local plan process, when we know obviously which sites we've got. And we do work through the, what's called the local plan viability assessment to assess what level that will be. And that would determine the threshold that we've got for affordable housing. But in terms of obviously how the government is intending to change SIL, um, obviously at the moment, there is no, uh, information about when they're going to come up with any kind of response to the white paper. Um, at the moment, uh, they've gone quiet, but that's not to say that they're busy in the background, uh, obviously coming up with a change to the white paper. But we do understand it's been slightly delayed. So at the moment, unfortunately, Chair, it's watch this space and we will keep members updated as and when we know what's going on. But, uh, at the moment, the government has gone quiet on that. Thank you.
I think it's very clear that we are the only district in the country, we're not the only district in the county, making the comment that, uh, this does put many of the services that, uh, come with, uh, properties or employment, it does put them at risk. Uh, and, and so I think it is, um, it's been part of everybody's response so far. Uh, Mr Finch, you wanted to make a comment?
Uh, yes, Chair, um, you might have to bear with me. I've got some internet connectivity problems, ironically, but I don't, can you hear me all right?
Yes, 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 we can. Can you hear us? Can you hear us? Mr Finch has disappeared. He had no electricity.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Can you hear us now? Can you hear us now? I presume everybody else is in the same boat, that they can hear when he introduces, but not anything further.
Yes, that's true, councillor Porter.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, Mr Fox, I don't presume you have any idea what he's going to be saying. So I think we'll have to move on and then we'll come back to, uh, Simon when he's turned back up on, on site. Um, did anybody else wish to speak at this point? Um, councillor Clemmson, unfortunately, you're not actually part of the meeting, are you? Have you come to represent somebody else?
No, not at all. It was just I had a suggestion, councillor Porter, that was all.
Um, well, unfortunately, because you're not part of the, uh, day going on. We can have a conversation afterwards and I make sure that we've taken that into account. I think we're meeting on Friday morning. Oh no, you're not going to be there.
I'm not going to be there.
We'll have a conversation.
Don't worry, that's fine. Thank you.
Uh, Simon, you're going to try another tie?
No.
No, obviously not. Uh, councillor Horrell and then councillor Brooke.
Um, councillor, uh, Porter, thank you for allowing me to address the, uh, the group this evening. I have, um, several comments to make about the issues and priorities document that we have before us, which is most welcome. As you know, I, I think it's long overdue, so I'm very pleased to see it. But, um, I was disappointed to, um, note that a document of such significance was not issued until Wednesday of last week. I appreciate you extended the public speaking opportunity, but there were obviously competing priorities at the council. But this piece of work is one of the most important the council's responsible for. And I hope that we'll be able to give the right resources so that, um, these documents can come out in good time for everyone to review them. There's been much mentioned this evening, councillor Porter, of the Winchester vision to 2030. And there's a suggestion in the document that this should be a base for a district vision. I would say quite strongly that I wholly disagree with that approach. Um, I welcome the fact that the city has prepared, um, their vision, but actually the district should, um, prepare its own vision, uh, that we shouldn't actually just take that as a given and springboard to the wider area. I noticed that many people credited with the vision, um, in the Winchester document are actually very Winchester centric. And I hope that this, uh, group will be encouraged to give the broader group across the district the opportunity to produce their own vision, vision, if that is required. I, I also see in the document brownfield is featured. And as you know, um, we've been advocating that we should build on brownfield first, um, as a first approach in this plan. Uh, it is therefore crucial in my view that the documents are up to date and lists of all available sites known. I looked up on the current documents referenced in this paper and I question why there are just 18 sites listed in the 2020 version. Surely we must have more and this is an essential piece of information. Perhaps it's going to be updated, but I'm sure it will be a matter of some significance for all of us as we look at the strategic direction for this plan. I also raised earlier today my concerns, and you've heard them councillor Porter, so I apologise, about the statement of common ground which you've committed to with the partnership for South Hampshire. Uh, the recently published white paper, Planning for the Future, recommends abolishing the need for the duty to cooperate. And, but you may say it's better for us to keep talking to our neighbouring authorities and that will produce a better outcome for all of us. But I really couldn't understand why we'd extended the decision to agree a joint strategy that will propose the scale and location of development needs of the Solent area and that this, the partnership will drive that discussion around potential strategic development opportunity areas. We know that, uh, the partnership for South Hampshire doesn't have the same, uh, requirements to consult. And I heard officers say earlier today, it was better to keep talking. But I do hope that we can commit completely that should any of these documents be brought forward, that Winchester will have its own opportunity to discuss these very significant pieces of work and whether we are committed to them in any shape or form. Uh, I note on that, um, statement of common ground that at the moment Winchester is the only net, um, uh, provider of homes to the, uh, area, uh, that covers the array of, uh, authorities. And I'm just concerned we're putting ourselves in play to provide homes for a broader area than we would naturally wish to, uh, support. Um, the other thing that I hope this group can do, and I appreciate all the work that the planning team have put into this. And I, uh, I hear Mr Fox say, this is version three and I'm, um, I, I, I know what a significant effort has been made. But I do think there are some gaps in the current document and trust that we, as a group, will be able to ask that these are enhanced before publication. Um, I would suggest that some of the lack of economic focus, uh, particularly on employment sites in this document is concerned, uh, is of concern. Um, Whiteley, for example, hardly gets a mention in the document, although it's a very significant settlement in our area. And I would hope that we as a group can discuss this further with the portfolio holder. Maybe councillor Ferguson can advise why we haven't, uh, really focused on this in, in the way that I think we all need. Why would we build houses when actually there are going to be limited places for people to work, uh, close to where they are residing? There were a number of specific studies in the document as well, councillor Porter. For example, there was the mention of the green blue infrastructure framework. Uh, but I was unable to find the specific briefs and objectives for some of these pieces of evidence gathering. And I think there'll be lots of residents who want to know and understand these. So please, can you help us to understand where these documents are logged and how we can access their progress? Um, there was also reference in the document to settlement gaps and the need to revise them, which I know for some communities will be a highly contentious issue. Um, a very important subject. But again, there was little information about the how and the what for that revision. Uh, likewise, settlement hierarchies, again, uh, they're mentioned, but, um, for the average person, we will need to help them to access that data and understand, uh, the significance of it. And again, the detail wasn't particularly clear in this document. And maybe that's the intention, that we then have to go to other places to understand this. Um, and, and, and finally, a couple of other points. Um, there was no real mention of the work that I think we do have to do, and again, the officers will correct me, um, around sites that are in the current plan, but, um, have not come to fruition in the last plan period. Um, Bushfield Camp is one of those sites and an important one. Um, does have, uh, an old army encampment, had an old army encampment on it. Uh, where are we going to pick those types of issues up so that people can understand, um, their, uh, their impact? So how does the last plan, um, and the lack of delivery of some elements influence the future plan? And like a previous speaker, I am, uh, really concerned, uh, that, uh, about the little mention of the movement strategy in, um, this document. For me, that strategy has to work hand in glove with the local plan, is a really important feeder. And I see limited progress on that, um, at this time. And I think it is an area that we, we should all be concerned about. We have all agreed it. I, I hope that we can embrace it. And how does that get included in the, the local plan? So, uh, councillor Porter, a number of things there, which, um, I'd be happy to discuss further with, um, uh, Mr Fox and his team if that's helpful. Um, but some very significant pieces of information that I think, uh, we as a group and indeed the general public will want some, uh, further clarity on and, um, access to so that we can all help to inform the debate. Thank you, councillor Porter.
Your mute.
You're muted councillor.
You're muted councillor Porter.
I'm just going to touch on two or three of those points councillor Horrall, and then I shall ask Mr Fox to just continue. I'm just asking to talk to you about Brownfield land in a moment. You say surely we must have more, or we just don't have more, that's the clear issue. And you mentioned about statement of common ground and the new plans abolishing the duty to cooperate. Well, of course, at the moment we don't have a copy of any new plan, so at the moment there is a duty to cooperate, and we believe that that's the current position. If that does change, then we are in a position to change our method, but it is very important to say that at the end of the day, the people that make the decision about the housing numbers in our plan are us, not PUSH. I think that's very clear, and we would have to agree anything that we wanted to do. Whitemley, I will leave to councillor Ferguson if I may, and the settlement gaps, I think that's the whole point of this consultation, that there are communities we know who are looking at those settlement gaps and are thinking about whether they're the right places. So this is about encouraging local communities to be involved through local neighbourhood plans or by talking to our planning officers about what they want to see. And you mentioned about no real mention of work around sites in the current plan in terms of deliverability. Our officers have already been having those conversations with those developers who haven't delivered as we had expected, so that's something else. And then you have also mentioned about the movement strategy. I know that councillor Todd has been working hard on that, and we have a couple of meetings about specific sites in the next few weeks. We are also trying to make sure that we have to deal with the Covid emergency actions as well as others, but the Winchester Movement Plan is just for the city, not for the whole community, I think it has to be said. Mr Fox, would you like to say anything? And Mr Finch, are you back online? Mr Fox first.
I hope so, Chair, yes.
Shall I, or shall we go for Mr Finch first, just in case?
Let's go for while I'm still here, although some of you may think that's no bad thing that I got cut off. Okay, apologies, it never normally lets me down, tonight of course it has. That's certainly ironic. Yeah, just a couple of bits to pick up on a number of the speakers, including what councillor Horrall was talking about. I think in terms of the vision, obviously take that on board. It was a vision produced, I think as one of the speakers said earlier, was centred around Winchester. I think all we're saying really there is there were sort of a number of things that came out of that, including concepts like the 50 minute city etcetera, that we can certainly look at in the context of Winchester City and the surrounding area as well, but some of the principles about engagement, even to the point of using the new website that you had the trailer for earlier, all of those sorts of things were things which we think we could use a little bit wider than just the vision for Winchester concentrating on the town, but understood that that's the area of focus that it had. Also, in terms of duty to cooperate, I think the point was made earlier that it still exists at the present time, so we have to plan for that until such time as that obligation is removed, and obviously being part of PUSH helps us to do that, but ultimately, any decisions are decisions that will be taken for us when we make decisions actually on the form that the plan actually takes. Am I still with you, or can you still hear that?
Yes. Yes, we can. You're still there?
Oh, good, okay, so it's still glitching this end, so I wasn't quite sure. I think that's really all I want to say, and also just echoing what was about the Winchester Movement Strategy clearly is an important document. As you know, I worked on that with colleagues from the county council. There are some exciting developments. It does take a while to launch those things. I think councillor Hutchison said it was four or five years ago, it's only a couple of years, but it may feel like longer in the current climate, but certainly things like Voltex is certainly coming forward are all things that we can work into at the local plan and promoting air buses, trains and also active transport as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr Fox, would you like to talk specifically about the green-blue infrastructure point?
Yeah, thank you Chair, if I can, I'll just quickly talk about the Brownfield issue.
On the Brownfield, yeah, thank you.
Because I know that's a very topical issue. For those of you who are very familiar with the NPPF, the National Planning Plan Work, I'd encourage you to look at the glossary of that document, which probably is an overlooked section of the NPPF, which actually includes a definition of what a Brownfield site is. Now, you can tell when you look at that glossary that it has been looked at by lawyers, and that's no disrespect to our lawyers, but it does include a very clear definition of what a Brownfield site is. Now, there is that misunderstanding, I guess, about what a Brownfield site is, and there are a number of sites that I'm very familiar with in and around the city that one would assume would be a Brownfield site, but they're not actually Brownfield, so I would encourage you to have a look at that definition of Brownfield sites. We do have to produce a Brownfield register every year, and I think councillor Horrall which referred to the figure that's in the Brownfield register. And I do think there's also, like I say, you need to start with a definition in the NPPF of what a Brownfield site is, but we are doing a call for sites for Brownfield sites as part of this consultation, and I would like to make it very clear that we are very, very keen to look at Brownfield sites wherever we can, but knowing Winchester as I do, there's not a lot of scope in terms of Brownfield sites that are out there that meet the definition of the NPPF, so I would encourage you to look at that definition. In terms of the green-blue infrastructure, that's a piece of work that we're just literally trying to finalise at the moment. We've been working with land use consultants, and that sets out the baseline for the blue-green infrastructure, and that's going to be an interactive kind of strategy that's going to be available for people to look at and comment on as part of the consultation. We're just literally trying to finish that at the moment. And in terms of obviously councillor Horrall's point about no mention of sites that are in the current local plan, if, and I do appreciate it's a long read, if you get towards the appendices in the actual strategic issues and priorities document, we have gone through the policies in the existing local plan and we have made a comment. Now, the clear thing that I want to make clear is each of the existing local plan policies need to be assessed on a level playing field in terms of whether or not they are still deliverable, and that will be a key test at the local planning examination. So any site that's obviously included an allocation in the local plan still needs to kind of wipe its face in terms of demonstrating that it is still deliverable, and we will be looking at that at the next stage of the work, but we've not yet started it, as councillor Porter indicated, we've had some discussions with some of the developers, but that work is still ongoing, and like I say, it's the next version of the local plan, we will need to demonstrate that those sites are still deliverable, and that's a key test that will be needed to meet at the local plan examination. So I will stop there councillor Porter, but happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you. Perhaps we should include in our glossary, our own glossary, the definition of Brownfield sites as from the NPPF. Perhaps we should make sure we include a description of what green-blue infrastructure is and windfall, and possibly even the Winchester Movement Study, because a lot of people think of that as the district's movement study, but it is actually the town or the city's movement study. Do you want to have an attempt at describing the Brownfield sites from the NPPF description? Or would you like me to try and go it up and bring it forward for us all?
I think the safest thing would be to actually refer to the actual definition rather than relying on my memory, Chair, but like I say, it's very, very clear what a Brownfield site is, and obviously there's been a lot of case law, all I can say is, in terms of Brownfield sites.
I'm just getting it up now actually. Page of glossary.
I have it councillor Porter, if you want to.
Right, I'm just getting there now. Registers of previously developed land that local planning authorities consider to be appropriate for residential development. Having regard to criteria in the Town and Country Planning Act of 2017, local planning authorities will be able to trigger a grant permission in principle for residential development on suitable sites in their register where they follow the required procedures. And then Brownfield land is described as previously developed land, but that in the sense of, I just want Mr Fox to confirm to me, that isn't necessarily properties that are properties with gardens that currently we would develop out. Can you explain that part of it as well, Mr Fox? He's gone.
I'm here Chair. I've actually got the definition, I've got a good old fashioned paper copy in front of me, so if I read out the definition, I think in the NPPF.
It's the previous developed.
Previous to developed land. So just bear with me, it's quite long. Land which is or was occupied by a permanent structure, including the curtilage of development land, although it should not be assumed that the whole curtilage should be developed and any associated surface infrastructure. This excludes, and that's a key word, land that is or was occupied by agricultural forestry buildings, land that has been developed by mineral extraction or waste disposed by landfill, where provision for the restoration has been made through the development management procedures, land in built-up areas such as residential gardens, so remember the word exclude, parks, recreation grounds and allotments, and land that was previously developed where the remains of the permanent structure or fixture of service has blended into the landscape. So that is very clear that it does not include residential gardens, and I think that point came across very clearly in the white paper. For those of you who remember when we were commenting on the white paper, the government made it very clear that it excludes kind of people's gardens.
And so as a result, we have relatively few true Brownfield sites.
That's correct, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Brooke, you wanted to speak.
Good evening. Good evening, yes, thank you for allowing me to do this, and thank you for allowing this to start at six o'clock this evening, because it has started at five previously, and with the hours I've been doing of late, I wouldn't have made it on time, so thank you for that. So thank you, I'm very pleased to see the options paper coming forward today. But before I comment on that, I just wanted to make reference to what was spoken about earlier with regard to the government consultation, and that the government have completely wasted everybody's time by changing the way that they had proposed to do things in that, and I just wanted to say I hope that this administration wouldn't be afraid to listen and completely change the flow of things if that's the way the feedback went, because the scathing attacks on completely changing the way we're doing things and wasting people's times, because they've listened and acted on that, I think is a worry. So I just wanted to confirm that this administration is open to changing the flow if that was the way that the consultation went. So moving on from that, I support councillor Horrall's comments regarding whether the city centre focus should be a basis for the district vision. The needs of our city, as mentioned, doesn't necessarily represent the needs of the rural communities, so I absolutely support what Mr Fox and mentioned earlier, and to you councillor Porter about putting out the Winchester vision for people to see so they are actually aware of what it is and how that would affect them. I'd like to ask whether the administration's considered methods to ensure that once the housing is allocated through a local plan, it could support and encourage the developers to build as planned to meet the annual targets, particularly with the current climate, meeting building targets will be a challenge, so any support we could give would be no doubt welcomed. And I wondered whether the 2018-2019 targets had been met on this, so we're already at a good starting point going forwards in this local plan, or whether we're already behind on our housing allocations, putting greater pressure on us moving forwards. I also wanted to raise the issue of economic allocations, as it would be more important than ever to seek people's input on the way things have changed over the past 12 months. The paper makes reference to park and rides, and councillor Todd often talks about having places where you can cycle to and then catch public transport, but I saw no reference of that sort of thing in this paper, so I wondered if that's also something that should be included in issues and options, or if that would be included elsewhere in another way. I welcome the thoughts on page 67, looking for sites for renewable energy. My concern would be the land value would be significantly less for this purpose than for building, and I wonder what thoughts there are around encouraging this and people to come forwards for that purpose, even though it might cost them. There's many questions within the consultation about carbon neutrality, and while I absolutely welcome that and that we should be at every opportunity seeking input from our residents to try and improve carbon neutrality or have additional ideas, there are some really confusing questions, I think in general for the consultation, for example, on page 71, it says what indicators in the local plan can we use to monitor carbon neutrality? I think unless you are really invested in carbon neutrality, if you're just a layperson, that's the type of question that would just confuse people and put people off, so I wonder if in order to engage people's views properly, we could perhaps rephrase some of those questions. Anyway, I thank you for bringing this forward today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you councillor Brooke, and that's just exactly the sort of issue that's really helpful when someone else reads through, that they may come forward to those. We'll relook at some of those. I take the point you made at the beginning, I don't think you would have heard me suggesting that any change in direction for planning is a waste of time. Certainly, it's always good to try new methods, and we were very keen, even as this started, to take up some of the positives from the suggestions that came forward. I think all we're asking, or I'm personally asking for, is that clarity, because I think it can be very expensive and time-wasting to have two running side by side, but I think Mr Fox and Mr Finch have done their absolute, and the whole team have done their absolute best in trying to make sure that whatever work is going forward now can be used for either sort of plan, and so it won't be wasted in any way, in any shape or form. And as you know, we have always been very keen to make sure the mapping process makes this whole thing much more open for the general public, rather than something that only the really, the ones in the know could do. Thank you very much indeed as well for the comment about the vision. I think it is important to make sure that that vision will be available so people can read it, so they see if they identify it for where they live, or whether they think it is purely something for the city or perhaps for other built-up areas, I think that's a very good point. And I will ask Mr Fox if he's got any other comments he wanted to make on that?
I think the main one, which I will pick up on councillor Brooke made about, obviously we can allocate sites, and we did make a response to the white paper in terms of obviously methods that the government could consider to make sure that developers actually build what we want them to build, when we want them to build them. We suggested in the response to the white paper that obviously they, once the site's got planning permission, you could start charging developers' council tax and things like that, and we do feel strongly about that, as with the council, that there needs to be incentives, obviously we can only do so much, but we have responded to that point as part of our consultation to the white paper, and obviously we await the outcome of that consultation to see what the government will actually do to encourage developers to actually build on the sites when we want them to build. So I do think that's a really important point. In terms of renewable energy, we do think that's a really important call for sites, and I'm very pleased that you're supportive of that. And like I say, we will make it clear that obviously we are looking for sites and where we're looking for sites, because I do think that's really important in terms of where the grid connection is, what type of site it is, if your own renewable energy generation in terms of a farm or something like that. Like I say, we are trying to make that clear, but we do think that's the important call for sites, so we welcome that, thank you.
Mr Fox, would you like to comment councillor Brooke asked about the number of properties that have been built in the last couple of years, and we recently had the monitoring report, would you like to comment on that at all?
Yeah, thank you Chair, yeah. So we produce every year what's called an authority monitoring port, that's available on our website, and that monitors a whole range of things in terms of existing local plans, in terms of how we're progressing with them. It includes information on how we're doing with the five-year housing land supply that many of you be aware of, and we are still on target in terms of obviously having a five-year land supply. It also monitors success or otherwise of existing policies, so I would encourage you to have a look at that document, there's a wealth of information that goes into that. It looks across the year, it does go from the 31st of March to the 1st of April, so there is a slight time lag in terms of how we can get that information all collated together, but it's a really important document to have a look at in terms of what progress we have. So if anybody's not familiar with that document, I would strongly encourage you to have a look at it. We've changed the format of it this year to make it a bit simpler and easier to understand, so like I say, we'd welcome comments on that as well, thank you.
Perhaps, Mr Fox, we could send it out to all members? I think it'd be really useful for the whole council to know how it goes, and also where actually the volume of houses does actually get delivered. Yeah, we've got some very big sites which have potential for delivering very You know, we've got some very big sites which have potential for delivering very large numbers, but at the moment, they aren't delivering the sort of numbers that actually our smaller sites are delivering. So that would be really helpful for the, perhaps with a summary, a quick summary document for the people to understand which pages to look at that might be relevant to their particular areas.
Yeah.
Really helpful. Thank you.
Yes, not a problem.
I think it's the knowledge that councillors need to have in order to be able to help their communities about how they can support their communities through the local plan process. That'd be good. Thank you. Councillor Ferguson and then councillor Evans. Or actually, could I just go for councillor Evans first because I know that she has to go after another meeting? Councillor Evans.
Thank you Chair. Yes, I do have to go to another meeting, but I was hoping we were heading towards the end. Here I am, adding to the length. Just a selection of four random points. You did ask about the way that the document was set out. And this is just for the officers to consider, but if we look at page 15, which goes on to page 16, two of the columns are not used at all. And so you've got to plough your way down a very narrow column vertically. And there are other examples of that, page 76 and page 97. And wouldn't it be an idea to shorten those columns where they've got nothing to say so that you don't have to keep reading down? I found that actually quite a difficult read. Could we just check on page 38, the accuracy of the statement about the West of Waterloo Vale, where we say the site is now called Newlands? Not sure that's totally correct. Some of West of Waterloo Vale is of course in Denmead and we'd just quite like, I don't want the answer today, but could we just check that? And then as Mr Fox said, on page 29... How do you know? How do you know? It's probably councillor Rea, but his light is flattered. But on page 29, the policies there are the ones that are development management policies. And I know you're going to be looking at those with my chair of planning hat on. It is MTRA 4 that gives councillors on the committee a lot of problems. I'm quite clear about it, but we had one at the last committee where people were doubting that policy. And finally, and I don't need an answer on that today either, but could I just check that all the questions that we've got at the end are those questions that we're going to see on this new website? Because it's loads of questions after each section, but it's unclear to me anyway what we should do with the answers. And that's it, Chair. I'll just wait for the answer to that and then I do have to go.
Thank you. Okay. Mr Fox, would you like to respond or would you want Bridget to respond to that?
I think in terms of the last point about the questions, we have included them for completeness in the document. They will be separately on the council system called Citizen Space in terms of how you can respond to them. We are very keen to make sure that if somebody's only interested in a specific topic, they can dip into Citizen Space and only respond to that specific topic. So it's currently been designed at the moment to enable people to do that because we appreciate not everybody wants to answer every single question. So we want to actually make it in a matrix style so that people can actually only respond to the questions that they want to respond. As my colleague Bridget has mentioned, there will be polls on the website as well. But the idea is that the questions will be signposted to Citizen Space where all the questions will be, but you're better dipping and dip out in terms of the topics that you're interested in.
The other point that was about layout, and in fact, I think councillor Ferguson partly addressed that in the conversations earlier. But we could certainly look at whether it would be better to do those in landscape layout to make it easier to read as you go down the columns. We can certainly look at that. And it was interesting, the conversation about MTRA 4. I think that's certainly about deliverability of a plan, and that's important too. And I know councillor Evans, you first sent in some capital, some punctuation and editing points that need to be corrected and we've taken...
Well, yeah. Sorry about that. But I wouldn't...
No, it's always good to have those. It's always good to have them. Thank you.
It's the chief of the bridges, I'm afraid. Anyway, I will leave the meeting now, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. And councillor Ferguson.
Yes, thank you. Thank you Chair. I just really wanted to come back on a couple of points that councillor Horrall had made regarding the employment space and the sort of, to what extent we need to emphasise the need to make sure that we have enough employment in sustainable locations and through the planning process and through this plan. I think in the objectives, we do make that very clear, that we are aiming to provide new offices and workspace in easily accessible locations and to protect, and this is important, the existing offices and workspaces that we already have that are in sustainable locations. Because with the new changes in the planning rules, where we can have a change of class from workspace to residential, we need to be careful that we don't lose those important employment spaces. We also point out that we want to make sure that employment is based around sustainable transport links and to reduce the need to travel to work. And within the sort of Covid framework, the other issue that we've picked up is that we also need to reflect when we're looking at employment land, the ongoing changes to the way in which people work. So one of the things we need to stress through the plan also is that we must also make sure that in terms of infrastructure, we look at digital connectivity. Mr Finch's own troubles this evening suggest how important that is going forward. And when I look at the document, I do see it refers to Whitley and Waterloo Vale. And in fact, it does say on page 10, that, on page 11, that when we look at the three key sectors, we look at Whitley and Waterloo Vale as a sort of a separate sector to the city and the market towns and villages. And we do talk about the need on page 39, to make sure that given those new developments that have been being built, there are the three and a half thousand houses at Whitley for 3,000 at Waterloo Vale, that they also provide for their communities in terms of employment opportunities and infrastructure and community facilities. And I'm very keen that as those developments take shape, that the land that's already been allocated for employment within those actually is used for employment opportunities and there's no sort of reduction in that in any way. We did comment, and it's a conversation I'd had with Mr Fox, that the view is that we don't believe that there is any likely to be any opportunity to increase the volume of houses in that area. However, what is good is that the sustainable transport links linking the housing development, particularly Whitley with the Whitley Shopping Centre and the Whitley Business Park is already being built so that people can get from one to the other. So that sort of fulfills that green, the climate emergency that's threaded through the local plan, making sure that development is sustainable going forward. So I know, I welcome all of that. One of the questions that I often ask is, we call for employment sites and we don't often have that many coming forward. Often we have more residential sites coming forward. And it also echoes something that Mr Shear said about Bishopswortham. We might like to have employment sites in certain areas, but we somehow have to get those to come forward in the right place. And there often is a mismatch between the two. So I wondered whether Mr Fox was set over to say anything about what more we could do to ask for employment sites or to perhaps suggest where we might like to see them and see if others would bring them forward. So just really a few comments to just councillor Horrall's points and to ask a question around employment sites. Thank you.
Mr Fox, would you like to answer that now or should we go on to councillor Horrall and then we'll come back to you?
I'm happy to just stress the point about employment sites, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you.
I think the same goes for housing sites. I know we talked about housing a lot, but in terms of employment sites, we do want to be proactive in terms of obviously making sure this plan is for us. And if local communities have good ideas where employment sites should be in their locality, we are very keen to hear that as part of this consultation so that we can obviously do some further investigation. So say for example, there was a settlement where they thought there would be a good need for employment site and it hasn't come through as part of the Sheila, we are very keen to hear about that so that we can do our own investigations to see obviously who owns the land and whether or not it would be suitable for employment sites. And that's a really important message that I would like to get across is that we want to be in the driving seat, we want to hear from local communities, they know their community the best. So we are very keen to hear if there was a site that is suitable for another use that could come forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Horrall, did you want to say something?
I did, thank you councillor Porter. And it was about the document itself and the language and definitions. This evening, we've had an interesting discussion about brownfield, but there are many terms used in this document that we might all be familiar with, but many of our residents will need help in understanding those definitions. And I think we need to perhaps expand that level of detail in the document. And also some of the language that we use, I think there's a lot of technical speak and that's no disrespect to the officers or indeed it's not common parlance. And I think the more we can make this language user friendly. I know in housing, we've had for a reader panel for many years. And I think sometimes putting those things in front of a panel of individuals and just getting their view is often helpful. Equally, I think this whole access to documents, because there are so many interlinking pieces, for us as councillors, we might be trying to seek some of this out. So poor members of the public trying to engage on some of these sites, certainly on our current website, can be quite difficult. So I think accessing documents, I think, is really important because that then allows people to take on board the content and give a consideration. For example, we talk about the deprivation index. I challenge most people to understand what it is, where it is, what it says and how that was calculated. But you know, we throw out these comments in the document, but actually, many people will be reading it and wanting to understand that information. The other piece that councillor Ferguson mentioned, digital, but the other piece that I thought was an interesting challenge for us, and of course, all of this is not necessarily in our domain, is some of our infrastructure issues. We talk about water. We don't talk about sewerage particularly. We have many settlements where we don't have sewerage facilities and our efforts, and I know myself, I tried to lobby Southern Water about that several years ago. But some of those elements in the infrastructure do hinder us. And I know if you talk to Carla about some of the things that have hindered them at King's Barton, some of those infrastructure issues have been a problem. So just to understand where, if any, influence we might have or lobbying we might do. And one final question councillor Porter, or point, you said that the movement strategy was for Winchester. It sort of is, but actually, if you're in Mitchell Dever and you don't want to drive and park in town, you want your park and ride in the north of the city so that you can be a good citizen and actually take that on board. So there are many residents around the district who are interested in what the movement strategy says because it will help them to better contribute to the flow of the city and actually not having to drive all the way in. So I'm not sure it is just for Winchester, it's actually for the border area. Thank you.
I understand what you're saying. I think the trouble is a lot of people think it's going to solve their bus problems from quite a long way out. And being realistic, that's not what it was about. But it is about making sure that people can get into the city and the city's as pleasant and the air is as clean as it can be. So I appreciate that. And I think that's partly why I was really pleased to hear some really constructive comments today about making sure that we have got those terms in the document that do make it easy to understand. And I'm a huge advocate for making sure that documents are written in simple language that the public don't, they aren't put off by page two and think they're not going to go any further. And certainly, the challenge of infrastructure issues, I know, is already being dealt with by the officers as well. So that is another layer that goes on to the evidence that ties up with this paper. And as you say, we know only too well how many people in the boards that we represent don't necessarily have access to a sewage system that most people think is completely normal for the rest of the country. So thank you very much indeed. Councillor Brooke, did you want to say something?
I did, yes please. It was just a reference to the comments that councillor Ferguson and Mr Fox made about seeking ideas for business and the like. So over the past 18 months, I've seen a real decline in the conversation between Winchester and Havant about West of Waterloo Vale, far less engagement with their members. And actually, the practicalities of what happens in West of Waterloo Vale affects the residents of Havant in many ways far more than it does those of Winchester. And there was also reference to Whitley Development and the business and employment areas there. And I would like to seek some reassurance really, that that engagement will recommence with Havant and that FERAM will also be consulted and open dialogues with FERAM on the Whitley developments regarding employment land and how we can work together with our neighbouring authorities to bring these things forward and ensure it's right for all of our residents rather than being so boundaried as we have been over the past 18 months. Thank you.
I would challenge the word 'boundaried' over the last 18 months, but councillor Ferguson, would you like to comment back on that one? Is she still there?
No, sorry, I am still here. So I haven't, in the role as portfolio holder for the local economy, haven't had any conversations with Havant. But through the strategic partnerships that have been set up with the market towns, we certainly have had discussions with Whitley and with the Sedginsworth bid. We haven't directly spoken to FERAM. I can talk to the economy team and see whether that's something they've done in the past under previous administrations, but you know, I take it on board. We look at boundaries, but employment, people work across boundaries. We have people coming into Winchester from the Eastleigh District, from Southampton, et cetera. So I can look at it, but we have definitely made a huge effort to create these strategic partnership meetings across the district. And that is going well and it's new since we came into the administration.
Thank you. We've also been trying to enable Newlands Parish Council and Denmead to speak up as a group of parishes down in that area. So I hopefully, they will have to stand on their own two feet eventually with the West of Waterloo Vale development. And so giving them the tools to be able to do that is very important whilst still obviously having the support of Winchester City Council. I take...
We'll just come back on that.
Yeah.
That just that understandably, Newlands and Denmead Parish Council absolutely can stand on their own two feet, but they don't represent all of the West of Waterloo Vale development area. There are clusters of that that are in Havant. And the reality is, we are on the doorstep of Havant and Waterloo Vale. So a lot of the decisions impact them more. So we need to facilitate that cross-boundary discussion.
Okay. I take that on board. I think we'll have to find a way of bringing that to fruition, particularly during the Covid times. It has been more difficult and I take that point. Is there anybody else that wanted to comment this evening before we come to a close? Okay, I've got a lot of pages of very useful comments and hopefully the minutes will reflect that. that. Please do read the minutes. And we will certainly try and do our very best to reflect some of this in, at least some of this, and hopefully all of it, in the paper that's at Cabinet next week. Obviously, it's been published, but, or this week, it's been published. But we'll do some work on this over the next 24 hours. And hopefully, you will see some differences as a result of the local plan advisory group work today. Thank you very much also to our two members of the public, from Bishopswalton, Mr Shields, and Mr Davis. Really appreciate your input this evening. So if that's all we have to say, councillor, sorry, Mr Fox, is there anything else you wanted to say to finish off this evening?
I need to thank everybody on the call tonight for their helpful input. We will certainly try our best to incorporate where we can the comments that have come up tonight. It's always very useful for another pair of eyes to have a look at the document because we do work very closely with it. So thank you very much, your really helpful comments. We will try our best to incorporate them before obviously the cabinet agenda goes out. There is quite a time to wait before that to go out tomorrow. So we will try our best. But I shall be logging on first thing to do my best.
And actually, a lot of it doesn't change the sense of what the cabinet paper is about. It's about the detail of when it goes onto the website and when it's called off. So we will certainly use that, including, I think the glossary is an interesting point. So we will certainly do our best to incorporate as many of the comments as we can. Thank you very much indeed. And I'd like to wish you all good evening. Thank you. Good night.